We're now okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is to advise that notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known agenda of the subject meeting was prominently posted in the public place reserved for such or similar announcements on May 23, 2024, mailed to the Princeton Packet, Trenton Times, and West Windsor Plainsboro News on May 23, 2024, and filed with the township clerk on May 23, 2024. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Fredkin.
Here.
Mr. Garcia. Mr. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mr. Raider.
President.
Mr. Marx.
President.
Mr. Jacobson. Mr. Church.
Here.
Mr. Huberman.
Here.
And Chair Roman Abbe.
Here. First item is the staff appointment of a landscape architect. Edward Sam, how do you say his name? Senikus. Please note that Michael has arrived.
Here. Here.
I think we, I looked over, I don't know, does anybody have any questions about the staff appointment of a landscape architect? Edward Senikus is from Burgess and Associates, which is where our planner is from as well. David Nova.
We're just going to have a new consultant from the same company.
Yes, it's from the same company as our planner to replace Dan.
Dan Dolemowski.
Dolemowski, who retired.
He's, he's not that old.
He retired, so.
Could I have a motion to approve the landscape architect?
I'll move to accept the new appointment.
Moved by John Raider, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Who was that, Carl?
Yeah.
Seconded by Carl, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion is moved. The minutes of February 1st, 2024, does anybody have any corrections, comments? Good to know, anybody have anything? No. Motion to approve minutes of February 1st, 2024, which was the regular reorganization meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John and seconded by John Raider and Church. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the minutes for February 1st, 2024 are approved. If there's any member of the public that would like to make a comment on anything that is not on the agenda for tonight, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Amartya Roy.
Sorry, can you say your name again and spell it for the?
Sure, it's Amartya, A.M.A.R. T.Y.A. Last name Roy, R.O.Y. So I'm the owner of 12 Barien Avenue. Oh, sorry. Yes. So I'm the owner of 12 Barien Avenue. I recently bought this property. So, so we love this neighborhood because of the, the train station and then we, we both of my, my, myself and my wife here, we both travel into the city. So this current house, it's a 700 square feet home on a 9,065 square feet lot. Now, I think a couple of months ago, there was a Barien City survey that was conducted here, and I did get the opportunity to go through the recordings. Now, given the size of the home, 700 square feet, we were looking to put in it so that we can support our family. We both have aging parents and we would love to have them stay with us. This current home is just a two bedroom with very low ceiling and one bathroom.
Is this 12 Barien, the little yellow house?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so we will be, so I, I'm actually working with a, a architect at this time, and he was able to give me a perspective view of how the new house would look like. If, if I may share it with you today, if that's possible.
Have you spoken to Sam, our zoning officer?
Uh, no, I haven't.
Probably make an appointment with Sam and he can give you some guidance.
And help you through the process.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. And next, next week I will be submitting the application as well, and, and then probably we can. Um, I, I mean, given the lot size and with the setback, at least as on paper, it's 20 feet. So probably. Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on. We need to close them. We need to close up. First application is ZB 2206. A request for a one-year extension of approval. This is an application we heard, I guess, a year ago, 976 Alexander Road. If you'd like to come forward and be sworn in, I guess.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give to the board is truthful?
I do.
Thank you, please introduce yourself.
Uh, my name is Nathan Prossing. Uh, my wife Allison and my two sons and I live at 976 Alexander Road.
Okay.
Um, we have a letter from your architect explaining what it is, if you would just want to put on the record what it is that you're requesting.
Yeah, we're requesting an extension of the approval that was previously given approximately a year ago.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, uh, it took a bit longer than we were expecting to solicit bids from very busy contractors. Uh, so we're just wanting to extend that approval.
Okay.
Oh, sure.
What's up?
There's no problem here.
Yeah. Um, so just to get it on the record, you are eliminating the second floor addition renovation.
Yes.
Um, but you want to keep the variance to extend the front porch.
Yes.
And to extend the rear deck across the back of the home.
Yes.
Does this mean that the variance for the second floor goes away?
No. If you grant the extension, all you improve, just the one on the.
Okay. Okay, good.
And then they don't have to build out to the full envelope, is that what you're saying?
He could build with whatever he wants to do, once he gets it. If you don't grant the extension, any of that.
For sure, but if we grant the extension, he doesn't have to build out to the full thing. That's all.
He may not need them.
Okay.
Okay.
So the permits you would be applying for just before the front, front porch and the rear deck. Yeah.
Yes, correct.
Okay, does anybody have any?
Yeah, since I voted against this application originally, am I allowed to build on the excess? Yes, you are. You had to vote.
I noticed you said there's a, no change to the floor area ratio, but wouldn't it be reduced actually if you took off the second floor?
There is not currently no second floor. The floor area ratio variance was approved to add the second floor, that's why we needed variance.
Or did it have floor area that needed approval? Because.
Originally, we were adding a second floor which required the floor area ratio variance. Is my understanding.
Actually, you're going to have less floor area now, right?
Well, yes, than, than the original plan, correct.
Okay, okay.
He's not going to move forward with the second floor, but he wants to move forward.
Right. He said that there was no change to the floor area ratio, but it's actually reducing it, isn't it?
Uh, sorry, I, I misunderstood, there's no change to the current floor area ratio. This is a single fan, single floor. Yeah.
So just to clarify one more time. You're extending exactly what we approved.
Yes.
Exactly. A year ago.
Correct.
Yes. Any other comments?
Do you want to extend it for a year from now? Because this approval was, the resolution was March. So he'd be eating into that by coming here in June. You can extend it from this meeting a year if, if that's your pleasure.
I'm fine with that.
Fine with that.
I'm okay with it.
I am too. It's only a front, front and a back, but one year, I think from today is, is fine.
All right, are you making progress with your planning?
Yes, we are, it's, it's been a.
We understand the problems that.
Yeah, young baby, and also he's had a bit of sickness, so it's taken a bit of time away from us as well, so.
No, we totally understand.
Yeah.
What's going on.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move for approval for the extension.
To extend as of today.
For one year.
As of June 6. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Carl. Uh, call the roll, please.
Mr. Garcia. Mr. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mr. Raider.
Yes.
Mr. Marx.
Yes.
Mr. Church.
Yes.
Vice Chair Huberman.
Yes.
And Chair Roman Abbe.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
You can also take off if you want to, you don't have to.
Unless you want, you want to see somebody else suffer, I don't know. Okay, moving on, ZB 2401. Mr. Rome, Six Robins Circle. Requesting side yard variance from 20 feet for an accessory structure, structure to 10 feet for an existing 65 by 14 mesh netting batting cage. Hello.
Hi.
For the record, that proof of notice, proof of publication are all in order, and we have jurisdiction this evening, so if you'd introduce yourself and spell your last name for our record.
Uh, sure, my legal name is Elan S. Rome. I go by Steve Middle, E.L.A.N., R.O.M.E. I reside at Six Robin Circle.
Thank you very much.
Did you need me to tell you everything's in order? I have everything in the box as well, all the, uh, um, the receipts and.
If you want to just explain to us what it is that you're, uh, what you want to do.
Yeah.
What you want to do, if you need your documents, that's okay.
Okay, so, um, so I've been a longtime resident, but I moved into this property in 2010, and at the time of putting in a pool, um, had some kids who played baseball and were, and softball and were into it, and we put up a meshed batting cage. I didn't know that, um, uh, that that required a permit, shame on me. So batting cage has actually been in place for, well, since 2000 and about 11, so, uh, maybe even 2010, uh, so almost 14 years. And then since then, there was something that came to the township's attention. I took care of that, and that's when the batting cage kind of emerged as a, as, as something that got flagged, that I was required to have a variance, and, uh, and I didn't have one. So I worked with Sam to put together the application, presented pictures, I think you guys all have the packet. The batting cage is used quite regularly, not just by my kid, but a lot of other kids. I coach a lot of sports, Little League and, and girls softball over the years, and so kind of view it as kind of a driveway playground, driveway basketball court, where just instead of a basketball court, kids come and, and we, uh, we hit balls. Um, I have a 12-year-old son right now. I did my best to, uh, we never use it at night, so I don't think sound is a problem, and the balls frankly are kind of a little bit, uh, soft, or the machine that, uh, that I use for it. What else? Oh, it's surrounded by mature trees that have been in place for about, I don't know, 14 years, ever since I put them in. Uh, it's, uh, not visible from the street or from the neighbors, and, um, it's meshed, uh, so there's never any water problems or any, uh, issues with, uh, with swamp or anything like that. In fact, there was a big problem with it beforehand, before I put the trees in.
Have you ever had to replace the netting?
Not the, uh, what I do is I supplement it, so I just, you know, where there's holes, I, I attach it.
And at what point you had a tarp or something over it and that's sort of?
Yeah, then, and that was stupid, to be honest with you, and that came down immediately as soon as I found out that was, it was, yeah, it was dumb.
Um, I have a question about the flooring. Um, that's impervious, is that right?
Water goes right through it, it never.
Water does go through.
Oh, yeah, no, it's never built up, there's, there's no problem there.
Okay.
No, it's all dirt, it's just kind of that old astroturf stuff that.
Yeah.
Now, basically, and that's it.
And how tall was it, Ken?
Uh, I put the dimensions in there, I, I want to say 12 or 14 feet.
Um, do we have? Just the flooring is pervious, that MIC is not an issue here, I assume? Or do we know what the existing MIC is?
The improvement coverage doesn't matter whether it's pervious or impervious, it's improvement coverage, so that doesn't matter as it relates to the MIC calculation.
Do we know what it stands at? I think it's 18% as.
And if you included this pervious material as improvement coverage, it would be 20.6%.
That's with the floor. Okay. That much.
That would be how much? What was the pervious with the?
It would be 20.6% would be the improvement.
It'd be okay without the batting cage.
It, it, it's calculated unless it's grass, grass, astroturf, it's, it would still be calculated in.
I know that, but no, but you didn't have the astroturf thing.
It would be in compliance. It would be fine.
Okay.
So, so we're not, we're not seeking improvement or impervious coverage, uh, here, even though there is.
We would have approved at 20.6, is that right?
Yes, excuse me, didn't notice for in MIC variants.
Oh, what does that do to us?
The board doesn't have jurisdiction to approve it because it wasn't requested in notice for.
We're not going to talk about MIC here.
Doesn't that leave us in a strange situation? How so? Oh, we know we have a noncompliant property that we're sort of approving half the noncompliance and half the other half.
I would think we'd have to approve the 20.6.
Well, he said we can't.
The board doesn't have jurisdiction for that.
Mr. Rome, when you, you noticed, the notice that you sent out to the folks, did you just talk about the side yard setback, or did you say such other relief or variances is necessary? What does your notice say?
Uh, it was whatever the template was, I can bring it up to show you.
You did. That's the proof. We're going to turn on these in tonight, is that the idea? Have you, you said? Yeah, so we'll take your proof of notice, that's great. We're going to take your cards, you don't, you don't need them anymore. Just find the, the notice that went in.
I apologize, there was a lot of paper.
Oh, that's okay. Just, the thing you put in the paper.
Do I understand correctly, there are two situations here. One is the setback of the batting cage, and the other one is the MIC because of the impervious.
Well, improved, because West Windsor's improved.
Yes.
It's improved.
But it's not.
It's not impervious because West Windsor has this.
So even if the flooring came out, it's still, it's the batting cage itself is.
If the, if the flooring came out, then there's no variance issue, there's no violation. There's no violation if the flooring came out.
Right, our, West Windsor MIC, the I stands for improved, not impervious.
Right. So the batting cage is considered to be improved.
Improved, which is.
Now, okay, now I understand. I, I.
Only if it has the astroturf flooring, correct?
Yes.
It really will rule, this is, this comes down to the astroturf.
Yeah.
He has to ask for an improvement coverage, Barry. So, so I don't, it kind of puts us in a situation here, uh, where there's something there that's not being applied for. This was unusual, because normally we go out and inspect sites when people want to do something new, and it's something you did years ago, and it's unusual. We, I was on, as you know, on the inspection team with Dan and Ike, so we're, it's kind of ex post facto, after the fact, you're asking approval now for something you did years ago, unfortunately without a permit, so that's a different situation, the permit is not our business.
Right.
Yeah, so that's up to Sam and his office.
My question is, calculated within that 20.6, is the cage itself, in other words, even if he ripped up the flooring, he would still be 20.6. So even though it's pervious, the fact that it has a floor is making it.
So if I, if I.
So if you cut a few feet off the very end of it.
So astroturf essentially is like carpet.
Yeah.
I go out in my backyard and I lay down carpet.
Yeah.
That, that increases my approval of coverage. Okay. Then you can roll it up.
Don't carpet your backyard. Especially, it's nasty.
You know, it's a big thing to put astroturf in your front yard in California, so.
Yeah.
But the, the setback will still be, the setback variance will still be, well, let's say he were to pull all the astroturf, the setback variance would still be the one.
Right, correct.
But also the MIC would be a problem.
Well.
It, it's, it's basically, it's, it's just, it's poles, and on the poles he has the netting, so it's not really calculating the improvement coverage, there's, it's.
It's not really poles.
I thought it was a structure, and then that's.
It's like a framework, it's all open to the elements, it's just structures that hold the net in place.
So what is, this category comes under what? Because it's not.
It's an accessory structure.
It's a structure, which is why it's 20 feet.
Correct.
Instead of 30 feet.
Correct.
And that's because it's not just.
But not a shed either.
It's a structure, yes, it meets the definition of an accessory structure.
My understanding, our task tonight is to deal with the side yard variance, that is the.
That is the extent of what you're looking at.
To decide.
And then if we want to worry about the NIC, that would come through you.
Correct.
At a later date.
If.
And, and Steve and I have talked about a solution to the problem, so we'll work it out, so all you need to work about here is the side yard.
We don't have to address MIC.
No.
Okay.
When we originally saw this, you were asking, you, you're quoting a 30-foot setback required, turned out not to be that. It's only 20 feet, and now you want 10 feet.
Yes.
Basically, the side.
Yeah. But I think you had informed that parts, because of the way the yard is slanted.
Sam, what is the side yard setback for a shed?
Well, there's no real definition for shed, so it would be up to my interpretation, but a side yard setback for the shed would be 10 feet.
That's good to know.
Just like the chickens.
They'll not go there.
I, I've got a curious question. Uh, there seem to be two neighbors on the other side of your house, but I don't see anything along the fence that is right next to your batting cage, is that open space?
Yes, that's the backyard of the house that's, um, the property that joins me.
Okay, they just, they just have a big lot that it's.
They have a huge lot, but the other house is way, way over, yeah.
It's not this whole, on the street or anything, it's totally.
No.
I drove around it and I drove by it twice, and I went in the, you know, the.
The only reason, yeah, the only reason it even came to my attention, a complaint was filed anonymously, and that's when Steve had put up the canvas, when you put the canvas over it, it, you can see it, it stands out then. Neither did we for 12 years until the canvas went up and somebody complained. And, and for the record, I have put in tons of permits with you guys over the years, so that have always been compliant and so on, I, I just frankly did not know.
Okay, so what we should basically do at this point is just approve the side yard setback and move on.
Set their sample clearly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, can you talk about, if, if you think back to when you would have come in or you were going to build this, can you tell us about how this is anchored in the ground? Because that would be, you would have probably had to have an inspection, I assume, and probably should get an inspection, just to verify that this thing is not going to get pulled out of the ground and fly up in the air.
Yeah, so. Me and my contractor friend 12 years ago, when it was a lot less painful on my back, but, um, we dug fairly deep holes and basically it's all anchored into the ground. And that's, that's about it, so, um, and it's surrounded by trees and fence, so there's really no wind that can hit it, the only thing would be snow, and there's nothing load balancing about, I mean, um, weight bearing that's, uh, that, that it would, that the snow would stick to.
Any other questions? I don't have a problem with this, does anybody have a problem with this? Yeah, we'll do a public comment and then, um, I can sort of go through sort of what, what our findings for, and then we'll vote.
You should also reference the site inspection committee's report for the record, too.
Yes, uh, we, we noticed that the thing, it really is not very visible from the street or from even, I, I suppose the neighbor on that side, he's never said anything about it, right?
Anything in the last 12 years, it's only when the canvas went that, that this even got triggered, so.
Um, I'll open this up to the public, if there is anybody in the public that would like to say anything, please come forward. No. Yeah. Seeing none, um, motion to close the public comment.
Close the public hearing.
Moved by John Raider, second. I'll second. All in favor of closing the public comment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? Okay, I don't think we have anybody that has a problem, but I do want to get into the record what our reasons are for deciding what we've decided, before we go ahead and, and vote. The questions we have to answer are whether this benefits the community and residents, I think it probably does. Whether it impairs the intent and purpose of the zoning plan. I don't see that, that, it does not impair it in any way, I think the board agrees. There doesn't seem to be any impact on the adjacent property owners. The netting on this is dark, which means you don't even see it. I asked about replacing the netting because if you ever did, it should be dark.
Hmm, yeah.
And, um, no tarps on the top.
Never, ever.
No what on top?
No tarps. At one point it, a tarp went over it, which was, I guess, lighter colored or something, but that's what made it visible, someone complained. I would also state, the houses in the neighborhood are very, very tall, so this is not in any way dwarfing anything whatsoever. And, uh, there are mature, tall trees all around that are much taller than even the, the cage itself, which, uh, helps with the. Which helps with the cutting out any visual aspects. The fact that you have this here, the type of ball that you use does not make a lot of noise. So hopefully you'll comply with that, continue to comply with that. I would say, see if everyone agrees. I think it should be inspected. I'm sure that one of our inspectors can go out and just take a look at it quickly and not be a problem. But I would say that it does need to have an inspection. It would have had one if you built it.
Sure, I can work that out with Sam. I think that was part of the next steps.
And our site inspection report was mostly positive, I think. John, would you characterize it as that?
Yeah, the only thing is that we've seen this all the time or frequently, that we don't have an up-to-date survey. And that's one reason we have to come and inspect it. But it happens all the time with us. We work without surveys, so we have to weigh through vegetation. So it always would be better if people would come with up-to-date surveys. And I would recommend that you update your survey to take these things into account. So it doesn't make our job easy when there's no survey. But we got, we came and we did it, so.
So the variances for this to be 10 feet from the property line or eight feet? Because it is at one point eight something, I think, isn't it?
Well, we don't know exactly where it is. The problem is we don't have the survey. This is an educated guess as to exactly where this thing is. Because we couldn't measure it accurately. Things are in the way. It was vegetation and a fence.
It's not be like the proper survey, like what they had to.
The survey predated the cage.
The survey is from when you bought the house, probably, before you put up the.
He has an older survey.
I'm saying for the purpose of determining the problem, that's.
No, the same on the property line.
Property line and where the, where the cage is.
It's not shown.
It's not shown on the survey.
If you feel you're comfortable locating, you feel you're comfortable finding the property line?
Yeah, well, we had, we had to go to Google Earth to find the property line or, and then I had to survey. This is our best guess as to where the cage is.
So do we have to designate a certain footage or what can we say?
We don't, we don't know exactly where it is. Nobody knows exactly where it is.
I would say 10 feet would be the closest it would be to the property line. And you might want to say 10 feet or it can't move from its existing condition. Location has a this date or something like that.
Can't be moved, okay. It can't further, it can't further approach.
No, nobody's switching to lacrosse. We're good. Baseball's narrow.
So I will say that you cannot further encroach.
No problem. Thank you for that.
I think that's it. Anybody has anything else to add to the approval? But those are the things.
Condition for inspections, that's it.
Yes. Condition for the inspection, netting stays dark. I mean, you know, those are.
Is there something in the motion about a number? With regard to setbacks?
10 feet.
10 feet.
I think it's just the current location of where it's at.
Yeah, we got to specify an actual setback.
I thought we could, we just say it can't be any closer to.
At least 10 feet.
That's probably what.
It might.
When he sells the property, somebody's going to take a look and they're going to see that there was a variance granted. And it better have a setback in there or else it's going to be a problem.
If we approve a setback of a minimum of 10 feet, will that allow him to keep his cage where it is?
Sure, sure. That's our best.
Well. Sam raises a good point. If you have a seller, then you've got to be specific with your numbers.
Yeah, same with that.
Yeah, so we'll. We can probably approve 10 feet. If you get a survey sometime, it may show a two-inch approach. And then you might have to do something.
No additional.
We made our best guess on.
I felt comfortable with it.
Remains dark. I think you haven't been in there. Don't tear down the trees, I guess. You'd be surprised. You'd be surprised how many people tear down.
And they're beautiful.
Okay, I think that's it. Do we have somebody make the motion to approve this as all the previous statements? Do we have a second? Call the roll, please. Second was John Churchill.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garcia. Mr. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mr. Rader.
Yes.
Mr. Marx.
Yeah.
Mr. Church.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hoberman.
Yes.
Chairwoman Abby.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a great summer.
Your house looks like party zone. Sounds like a fun house.
It's, it may look like it, but I'm in bed by nine, so.
Thank you. That's it. Anything else? I think we can adjourn. Okay, so no July meeting, but we do have one in August. Motion to adjourn. Motion made to adjourn by John Church. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, everybody. See you in August.